Are you online?
Do you want me to say?
Uh huh. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I can.
Okay, we have our clerk auditor, John David, he'll do it.
All right.
Our heavenly Father, we are grateful for the chance we got to kind of be able to do it. I pray that that would help the commissioners today as things are discussed and decisions made, that they will make decisions to the best of their ability. We pray for the safety of those who are out protecting our county. And pray for those who are sick and fighting the coronavirus. We pray that they're, that they'll be able to fight it and overcome it. We thank thee for the free land that we live in, for the opportunity that we have to meet. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Can you guys hear me well?
Yes, yeah, I can hear you.
Can you hear me pretty good?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, those of you that had called in to be listening on our permission meeting. We're going to be starting with the public comment here this morning. But please keep in mind that if there's one of you or two of you talking to the same subject matter, we will have Matt let you know that we've already gone through the same thing. And as we go along the agenda, if we talked about certain item or discussing certain impact to your community, I will call upon the, a comment to anybody. But first, I'd like to have the commissioners allude to the issue before I turn the comment to public. So those are some of the rules that we have, and please stay within the frame of three minutes. And again, welcome. So, uh, uh, Matt, can you go ahead and start up with the public comment?
Okay, just a reminder, public comments will be limited to three minutes at a time. We'll be timing you, you'll hear that go off. So if you're wishing to make a public comment, please state your name, your address for the record, and then we can turn the time over to you. Also, recognize the fact that where this is virtual, um, just a reminder to star six, we've had people, individuals, problems of that in the past, that you'll have to unmute yourself. Score six is typically, unless you're at your computer, unmute from there. So just be aware of that. We've missed public comments in the past, and so be mindful of that. Also, um, pass the public comments, once we close that, um, you know, then those public comments are are closed to that unless the commissioners open it back up. And so be mindful of that. And if there's anybody at this time wishing to make public comment, unmute yourselves and we'll just go one by one. I'm not seeing anyone. There's 21 people on here, and so. I'm not going to force you to make public comment, so if there's nobody on to give a public comment.
Matt?
Oh, there we go.
No, I'm not making a public comment, I just want to clarify because maybe there's confusion. So you're taking public comment on things that are not on the agenda? And if people can't stay for the entire meeting, you would take public comment on things that are on the agenda at this time, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you, I just wanted to be clear. Thanks, Matt and Chairman.
Thank you very much. So is there any public comment? If there's none, I guess we move on down to the next item, Matt.
Commissioner Mary Boye?
Yes.
This is Anna Wippenen, I'm in Bluff.
Okay.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to make a public comment on the agenda, the agenda for the consent agenda. We have a request for letter of support for range improvement plans. I would just like to note that two of those plans would have well the drilling to the Aquifer. And as we all know, the Aquifer supports not just Bluff, but a very large geographic area. I'm asking at this time that the commissioners defer submitting letters of support for those three RIPS. Right now, we don't know how much water would be pulled from the Aquifer. Bluff completed a 50-year water study in June of 2020. And the conclusion was that we don't have sufficient water at the end of the 50-year planning project. So I respectfully requesting that you defer supporting these three plans until further information is gathered. We're in the process of talking with SITLA now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Anna. Anyone else? Going twice? Third and the final call, a public comment, we passed that.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I have a short comment.
Okay, please put your name and your address.
My name is Larry Edwards. I live at 560 Pack Creek Road in Spanish Valley. And I think this is really because of the extensive development that's proposed here that I'd really like to request the commissioners to exercise prudence in how this unfolds, how this happens. And I think key to that, in fact, the only way that I think we can have a mechanism for steering this is to, uh, is, is put by phasing is specified in the 2018 Spanish Valley Area Plan. So that's a, yeah. I, we, we have to, we have to be able to have some oversight with SITLA. We can't assume that it's, that they're going to act on our behalf. So we really need to ask the commissioners, in this case, to take our concerns to heart and to act on our behalf. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, anybody else? Anybody else? Third and the final call. Okay, Max, let's go down to the next item, item number three.
Okay, item number three is your consent agenda items. You have the meeting minutes to be approved from the last meeting, as well as your check registers. And then a small purchase of an AFAC system in the Public Safety Building. This amount on that small purchase was $3,000. This was in the IT room. As they installed the 911 system, they had to have two separate dispatch areas. And then this one area with all the IT components in it was overheating. It required us to hurry and get a, an AFAC unit where we're good enough to have something local that could do it in the timeframe, but that's been installed. And then you have a contract amendment. This contract amendment is for the Department of, between the Department of Health and the Department of Public Health in San Juan County. This is an amendment to a previous 2016 contract for its, the minimum performance standards that we have to adhere to. The original amount was $296,212. The new additional funding that we're going to be receiving is an increase at $58,132 of state funds. So the new total for this contract and the amendments is $354,344. That commissioner is all of the items for consent for your approval.
Okay, could you read the whole agenda into the record so we can motion and accept the agenda so we can add on it?
Absolutely. So item four, recognition, presentation, and informational items. You have a support letter for cultural work on the Canyon Rim's travel management plan. These were, all four of these will be presented by Nick. You've got a support letter for Range Improvement Project, um, number 851. This is the Tank Bench Mesa Waterwell and the pipeline. The next one is a support letter for Range Improvement Project, number 780A, East League Horn Pasture Water Well System 11. And then a support letter for Range Improvement Project 848, Southeastern Upland Game Guzzler Phase Two. Under Business Action Terms, you have consideration of agreement with San Juan County Public Health Department for payroll protection programming, Healthcare Enhancement Act with the State of Utah Health Department. That'll be presented by Kirk. You have consideration and approval of Emergency Management Planning Grant. This will be presented by Tammy. We have declaration declaring the existence of a drought emergency in San Juan County. That'll be presented by Tammy as well. Next one is you had a consideration of an ordinance establishing administrative hearing program for San Juan County. I'll present that along with consideration of contract for San Juan County Aged Tax Claim Agreement with Lisbon Valley Mining Company, LLC. Then you've got the approval of the SITLA PC Zone Application Preliminary Community Structure Plan as recommended by the Planning Commission on June 11th, 2020. That'll be initially presented by Walter Byrd on there. And then your final item is your commission comments. That commissioners is your entire agenda for today.
Thank you very much. So I have a motion, commissioners.
Motion?
Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we have a working agenda. Um, we go back up to the meeting minutes, A, B, C, D. Our administrator has read all those into the consent. So it's up to us to accept this. Do I have a motion to accept all four?
Motion?
Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Thank you very much. From A to B, D. You have these four items. Any comment or question to that particular, um, areas, commissioners? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We've got those minutes and everything approved there, Matt. The next item four, you want to go one by one, or how do you want to do this, Max?
It's one by one.
All right. Let's go with the supporting letter, cultural work for the Canyon Rim's.
Okay, this one will be presented by Nick.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me all right?
Good morning, sir. We certainly can.
Thank you. The first item is a letter on the Section 106 consultation efforts for the Canyon Rim's Travel Management Plan. Now you may remember that this Canyon Rim's Travel Management Area includes most of the Hatch Point and the Schaefer Basin areas within the county. Planning on this travel plan began in 2018 per the settlement agreement that BLM and the appellants reached on travel plans that were in the 2008 Resource Management Plans. Now San Juan County is a consulting, is a cooperating agency for this planning, as well as a consulting party in this Section 106 process. Now just a little background, this Canyon Rim's Travel Management Area is just over 102,000 acres of BLM state and private lands, and it includes 274 miles of existing designated routes, which are county, county roads. And there are varying alternatives of road design, uh, varying alternatives of miles of road designations being analyzed in the environmental assessment. The preferred alternative, I believe, includes 231 miles of routes proposed for designation. Now as part of this 106 process, an area of potential effect has to be determined for each road or route. There's a direct APE or area potential effect and an indirect APE. The direct effect was considered to be 15 meters either side of a route, forming a corridor of a little more than 30 meters in, in width. The indirect APE is for all known cultural or historic sites within a quarter mile either side of a route, center line. In this particular travel management area, 119 archaeological surveys have been completed since 1978, most of them during the 2006-2013 period during planning for large seismic projects. 461 sites were identified in these archaeological surveys, 316 in the indirect APE, and 96 in the direct APE. The majority of these sites are small lithic scatters. There are 27 National Register eligible sites that were revisited as part of this 106 process. 16 of those 27 were determined to no longer be National Register eligible. And all of these that were determined to be ineligible were relatively, were sites with a relatively small number of lithic flakes in shallow dunes. And BLM determined that these sites do not have the potential to address research questions for the area. And as a result of this travel planning effort, there were new Class III cultural surveys, on-the-ground walking surveys completed. And that included 488 acres in, on 46 route segments that were in the direct area of potential effect. And these are all areas that had not previously been surveyed. In these new surveys, six new archaeological sites were found. Two were lithic scatters, one was an ancient petroglyph panel, one was a modern petroglyph panel, and I think that's, I can't remember what it was, something like almost graffiti, modern graffiti. And then one historic corral and several uranium mine adits. Two of those six were determined to be National Register eligible. And that was, those two were the ancient panel and the mine adits grouped as, as one unit. Site revisits of cultural sites and documentation indicate that the 2008 Resource Management Plan designated routes are not adversely affecting these cultural sites. And as a result of that, BLM proposes that designation of the existing routes would not diminish the integrity or physical characteristics of these cultural sites. And they propose a finding of no adverse effect for designation of these sites. So BLM has requested our comments as a consulting party. And the letter you have before you for consideration basically responds to that request, stating that we do not disagree with the process or the proposed findings or the proposed finding of no effect. Do you have questions for me?
Motion for discussion. Again, motion for discussion.
Make a motion for discussion.
Motion by Commissioner Adam for discussion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Okay, commissioners, questions, comment?
Uh, question, uh, Chair?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gray Eyes.
Uh, some of, uh, these are probably, as I understand, perfect observation surveys. There's no digging, nothing of that, so is that correct?
That's my understanding. Now I guess if there was something that was apparent on the surface that may have required some digging and that, I think this would be very minor by the archaeologist doing the survey, I suppose there would be some maybe scraping around, but no formal excavations or work below the surface. This would all be recording any evidence that's apparent on the surface of a cultural site. site.
Has this consultation been extended to Indian tribes, Native Americans?
Yes, it has.
Their response?
I do not know of their response. That would be, uh, BLM would be knowledgeable of that.
I, I thought they didn't include that the results, if there's any response or no response.
Commissioner Adam?
I think the reason they don't include, uh, any information from other respondents is they're just asking the county to make a comment as the county. They're not asking us to evaluate any of the other comments from any of the other people that have, have or have not responded. So this is, is the county's response. We think the BLM has done an adequate job in surveying these sites, and none of them will be affected by the routes that are there. And so, um, our comment letter is saying, we agree with the process and we agree that the BLM has done an adequate job of the survey. We have no idea what the other respondents have said, and it's not our job to be, to be involved in what the other respondents say. That's the BLM's job.
I appreciate that. Yes, I do believe that there's a failure of some, of some degree of, uh, of, of, uh, of certain parties. Um, I guess my question is, do we have an expertise in, in our county to make those judgments and those calls? And, uh, the other question is, have the Hopi responded? And what's their response? And, um, of course, the, the Navajo Nation, and where are they at on this? Because I, if I'm going to support something with a letter, I, I better know what I'm talking about before I submit any letter because, uh, if we have an expertise and that individual should be able to, uh, draft a letter for us and, and responding to how the Hopi have perceived, uh, their, 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 their position on this along with the Navajo Nation. So if there's no idiocy in the comment, I'm gonna call for the quick question and maybe put this into a vote.
Well, again, Commissioner Redboy, um, we're just saying that, um, that Mr. Samberg, who was a past secretary of the BLM and has a lot of knowledge about how these processes work, um, he, he is our in-resident expert on the process. And he feels like, uh, the BLM has done their due diligence in surveying, actually going out and walking the site and looking for any evidence of cultural resources that exist. And when the BLM did that, they found some site that, uh, were cultural sites, but they determined that, um, the, uh, travel management area was not going to be, those cultural sites were not going to be affected by the existing roads that were there. And so he's simply writing a letter to the BLM in behalf of the county and only in behalf of the county, not any other organization, saying, we think you followed your process. You went out on foot and looked at these sites, and you found some evidence of cultural resources. You found, uh, you determined that the cultural resources were not going to be damaged by the roads that existed there. And so our letter is just saying, we think we agree with your process and we agree with your evaluation. And, and that's, you know, every, every other cooperating agency, including tribe, have that same opportunity to write a letter, uh, telling the BLM, um, we appreciate the fact that you followed the process and found the cultural resources that you found and determined that they were not going to be affected. So I support, um, the letter that's been written, and I would make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign the letter and send it to the BLM.
Thank you very much, Bruce. I really do appreciate that, and I do appreciate the work that you do out there, Nick. And, um, you know, a lot of these things come back and nip us on the butt at times, and I, I sure hate for this to see. And Nick, you do a good job, and I know that, uh, you're not an archaeologist. That's, that's, that's the thing here is, we're gonna submit the letter of you all the findings that you see out there, but, um, if, if, if nobody is an archaeologist to say that this is, this is to say that this has been here in quite some time, to me, that's, uh, that's a little bit, um, uh, way out of, uh, out of order to, uh, taking a position on this one. But it's up to you, uh, commissioners. I'm gonna call for the question, and, um, I have a motion by commit.
Nick Ford, um, I have a comment. I think the, uh, every time we know how-
Discussion before we have a discussion, Kenneth?
We, we are discussing. We made a motion and a second, and we're open for discussion. That's what we're doing.
Who made the second?
I haven't.
Can we discuss it without a second?
We already made a motion. You made a motion. I second for discussion.
That's it, say.
We continue. The thing about it is that the, uh, these surveys are done, I'm sure they're done in good faith, but on the other hand, my question still stands. Um, I don't want to be a rubber stamp in terms of some cultural issues that has not been addressed. In this case, I want an answer as to my previous question. As I understand, these are just, uh, surfaced observation. Who knows what's underneath that little flake of limestone? So I want to be guaranteed that these things are fully satisfied to my question as to, let's say, uh, might as well, uh, do all the, uh, the surveyed area, um, with little or no significant effect. Be, um, addressed fully in order to, uh, expedite whether it's, then you can determine whether it's, uh, no significant impact or, uh, otherwise there, there might be something underneath there. So that's my position.
Kenneth, this is-
Thank you very much.
Management plan. It's for traveling on the surface. It is not anything to do with, um, digging or drilling or going under the surface. This management plan is just a system of roads that exist right now in that area. It's just saying that those roads pose no significant effect on the cultural resources that the BLM archaeologists have on the surface. And that's all that they're trying to analyze. They're not trying to analyze anything underneath the surface because they're not going to go underneath the surface with the road system.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Any last comment, Nick, before we, uh, take an action?
No, nothing additional to that other than, you know, this is, as Commissioner Adams said, for surface travel on existing roads, just would be like any other road within the county, whether it's on BLM lands or, or Navajo surface or, or state surface. Uh, and BLM has followed the procedures that are recognized. They follow the standard procedures. There's, what Commissioner Gray Eyes is asking for would be something that is in, in addition and not, um, not within a standard procedure. And of course, we as government agencies basically act using standard procedures. And that's all I, I would say.
Nick, is this procedure outlined by some congressional action for the BLM to consider cultural resources when considering a travel management plan or a road system across BLM property?
Well, there would be, the, the standard procedure would be identified in, uh, in law and regulation is my understanding. And then in addition, this is a special case because of a lawsuit and a settlement agreement that was reached on that lawsuit. So there are, could be terms and conditions in this settlement agreement that BLM is, is bound to follow.
But basically, there's federal law that, um, that what can be done with travel management plans on BLM property throughout the United States.
If it's not specifically stated in the law, it would be stated in a regulation or a policy that develops from the regulation and the law.
And, and you feel like BLM has followed the regulations, followed the law, and followed the conditions of the, um, lawsuit that was filed, um, previously, uh, by people versing the Department of Interior?
Yes, I do. I, I, yes, I do. I have no reason to believe otherwise, and that's why it's stated in the letter. We have no reason to contest these efforts.
And I, uh, I do appreciate that, Nick, uh, for the good work you do. Um, the response that the, um, Commissioner Adams alluded to, the lawsuit. If there's a lawsuit, then the other parties need to be aware of where and what the topics and what we're talking about, mainly from the, uh, from the nation and also from the Hopis, how have they responded to this?
And I'm not privy to that, those responses. That would be the, uh, participants in the, in the settlement agreement, which includes BLM, of course, and other, the entities that filed the lawsuit.
Well, you're the one that's drafting a letter for us, Ma-, uh, Nick, so that should, uh, kinda give you, uh, uh, some of what the degree of the inputs of other parties would be. So, uh, at this point in time, uh, commissioners, I'd like to, uh, call for the questions.
One, one other question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, um, Mr. Samberg, what would happen if it's not approved?
Well, not sure. And, and we, as a San Juan County, are just one of the consulting parties in this, in this process.
What would happen if disapproved?
Well, that could, I guess, put into jeopardy the entire, uh, county road system that is within this geographic area.
So the, the other question I have is if we do not approve it, then the, the whole, if there is, and the whole management plan would still be in place, right?
Except that the management plan, even though it is in place, it's under litigation, which was resolved with this settlement agreement. And this agreement laid out the conditions that, uh, BLM would have to do in travel management planning. And part of the travel management planning includes the section 106 cultural resource consultation process. Now, when you, when you asked earlier whether, what would happen if this wouldn't be, if approved, maybe you were asking just about our letter. And of course, we're just one of the consulting parties. And my response was based on the whole process, if the whole 106 process was not approved, then they'd probably have to go back to the drawing board and, and that's could, as I say, jeopardize the continued existence and use of county roads in the area.
Okay, the, is your letter included in your document, support document?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is included.
Uh, let me check. I've, I failed to see, and I'm not-
I'm not sure what you were sent or how you were sent the information, but it is, uh, our response to BLM, Moab Field Office is in that packet.
So in there, it, it states in the letter, um, that we recognize that the BLM, um, has put forth an effort to include the literature review, development of cultural resources, occurrence on their map. They've done the site visits, uh, they have the archaeological surveys. In there, it states that we understand that these efforts were done in consultation with the tribes, interested parties, the Utah State Historic Preservation Office. So it also includes the State of Utah with it as well. And all our, our position states in there is that it appears, and I quote from Nick's letter, "It appears that your office," which is the BLM, "have made a good faith effort to comply with the settlement agreement, programmatic agreement, and applicable law." And then it says, "We have no reason to contest your efforts or to disagree with your proposed determinations of a national register eligibility of your proposed finding of no adverse effects to historic properties from designation of these roads." End quote. In their, in their letter, uh, asking consulting parties, of which we are one, they had mentioned in there that they're, they did the field survey. There are still sites that, from that survey, they've got 27 sites that were revisited. Um, six new sites were identified and documented for a total of 33 sites. So they have their summary of findings and effect, but all of this- So they have their summary of findings in effect, but all of this effort is done not on the county, this is an effort that BLM had made. And so us as a consulting party, do we, do we agree that they've done their due diligence in this process? I think an attorney would be the only really one to be able to make sure that they've complied with the settlement agreement. That's not an agreement that is with the county. As a consulting party, it's, we feel that, you know, they've done everything that they've been, from our standpoint, we haven't, as a county, asked them to do anything extraordinary. So there's no conditions that we've placed on the BLM to comply with. Just as a consulting party, we agree with the measures that they've taken. And quickly to go out and provide, I mean, they've tried 119 archaeological surveys since 1978, but most currently between 2006 and 2013 of a 2008 management plan. And so it's like they continue to go out and, and look at new roads, these routes, a total of 488 acres, that's a lot to be received, but we have heard that they've done the due diligence in those efforts. It, it shouldn't be up to the county to hire an archaeologist to, to fact check the BLM. We're hoping that they're doing their due diligence on their own. But from everything that we can see up to this point, we're fine with, unless there are other conditions or other recommendations that you would like to make in the letter, we can definitely change the letter. If there are questions that you would like us to ask them as a consulting party, then we can ask that of them. But they're just out gathering information from all the parties, of which we're one, and the tribes are. It'd be difficult for us to even get the full information because it's nothing that we've ever asked before of the tribes to submit, you know, what their concerns are to a BLM plan. It's the BLM's plan. And so hopefully that helps clarify.
Yeah. The case, in that case, I'd like to propose insertion of the language that would say, if the improvement of the road, travel management plan finds significant sites of cultural evidence, the chances is to change that to be included, possibly the full extent of to where it might be, might need an excavation. To guarantee that we do, we do attention on, on these projects.
Commissioner Gray Eyes, this is Sandberg. If I may make a comment on that.
Go ahead, sir.
You, you, I think, are referring to an action that would be in the decision record of the analysis for the entire travel management plan. And this, this letter relates only to the Section 106 process, which is just one of the, the parts of the analysis of a travel management plan. This 106 process would be used in the development of alternatives and analysis in the environmental assessment, which is currently in progress, and it is not yet out for public comment. I'm thinking that the line or the, the item you would like to enter would be more appropriate at the comment on the environmental assessment level rather than the Section 106 process level.
Now, that comes back to us again, Nick, doesn't that, in the future?
Yes. We are an agency in this entire process. So yes, we will have the opportunity to comment at a future date. It's not yet out for comment.
So we can add that to your letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I failed to find your, your letter to BLM, so that's the reason why I'm questioning. It's not in the packet.
Do you have the other information with this 106 process? The letter is addressed to Nicole Gaddis Wyatt at BLM in Moab.
I see the other, uh, uh, letter to her on range improvement.
No, that would be to the state, not to the BLM.
Let me get there, Commissioner, and see what page it's on. If you're, if you look, Commissioner Gray Eyes, to in that packet that we sent you, page 19, page 19 of that PDF is the, the, the letter to Nicole Gaddis Wyatt. And that's the town's recommended response to, to the Section 106 process.
Okay, I, I have no, there's no page number on this, though.
No, if you look at the bottom in your, in your browser or the viewer, it shows which page is you're on. It's right after the health, health departments. But your browser, whatever viewer you're looking at, should show the pages, page number. So like my, the PDF reader shows page number.
Okay, I got, I'm kidding there.
Okay. So that, what I quoted was that second paragraph down. So that next, that is what, is what their summary is, what they sent to us, including their letter of all of their due diligence and the efforts that they have made in compliance with that Section 106.
So the language that I propose would be inserted into the public hearing comment? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, so in a few, in the future letter, we'll be able to comment on that next step.
Okay.
And so we'll remember that, that there's just that concern. And I think that's a NEPA process anyway that they have to go through.
Yeah.
Yes.
See ya.
All right. It sounds like Commissioner Gray Eyes is satisfied. Before I call for the questions, I do, I do know, and I, I don't think we need to hire any archaeologists. And, but on the other hand, I don't think the county should be sending letters to the BLM saying to agree with the BLM data mining, that the cultural resources won't be affected. Because county has no expertise to be able to make a decision. And I've already posed my comment for the record as, as we talk about this. So, okay, all those in favor?
We need a, we need a main motion for it.
So that was, you had seconded the motion, the original motion, Commissioner?
That is only for discussion only.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't need to be, but we can do it. All the motion to send a letter.
I'll make a motion to send the letter.
All right. Commissioner Adams motions adamantly to send the letter. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a second. No comment discussions, all those in favor?
Aye.
No? Okay, we have an aye, opposition. And of course, I will vote, no vote on this one here. So we have a two aye and one nay. Thank you very much. And the next item, Matt?
Okay, the next one is for Nick as well. This is the support letter for Range Improvement Project 851. This is for the Tank Bench Mesa Waterwell and Pipeline. Take it away, Nick.
Uh, yes, I think I'm unmuted. Can you still hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
We can hear you.
All right. The, the first one is for the water well, livestock water well, the solar pump, 3,400 feet of buried pipeline and two stock water troughs on Tank Bench. And this would be approximately three miles northwest of Bluff. Now, SITLA has received an application from a supposed individual, probably the grazing permittee, to do this improvement for his grazing operation. I don't know that a water filing application has yet been made. I'm guessing that they would either approve or disapprove this application to start on the project, and then maybe the water application with a state engineer would be made. But I'm not positive of that sequence. So that's the, the project that is before us. And the state has sent us a letter, SITLA sent us a letter asking, do we have any comment on this?
I'd like to motion to table this based on the comment that was made by the mayor of Bluff until we get a, a study or research as to the amount of, and the effect they will have on the proposed development.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Commissioner Mary Boye is there? Commissioner Mary Boye, welcome back. Can you hear me? You're still on mute. Commissioner Mary Boye, there you go.
Okay, am I, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I've got you. Sorry about that. So you had the...
I have a motion from Commissioner Gray Eyes, and Bruce was making amended, amended motion, but just right then, my phone went out.
Okay, substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
Commissioner Adams, correct.
Yeah, I want to make a substitute motion in light of this being an application by a grazer to water their paddle in two livestock pond, livestock troughs. I can't imagine that this water would be as much as one household would use. And so I think the amount of water that is being asked for on this, this application will have an insignificant impact one way or the other to, to really the residents of Bluff. And then unless they're going to put a moratorium on any new water hookups and block of any kind because of their water concerns, I make motion to approve.
So Commissioner Adams does a substitute motion, so all focuses on that. And he stated his input. And before I call forward, do I have an impacted community or individuals that would like to say something? If there be none, all those in favor and a substitute motion?
Aye. Mr. Chair, there needs to be a second to the motion.
That's what I'm waiting for. Going twice? Gone. Okay, now back to Commissioner Gray Eyes' motion to table the item until further discussed the, the area and the impact with the, with the Town of Bluff. Again, the impacted area, are you there to comment? If there be none, I will second the motion to that. And all those in favor of tabling the item?
Hold on just a second. Commissioner Anna is unmuted herself. Anna, are you still there?
I'm still here.
Did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
The only comment that I have is that since two, two of the three RIPS are within the town boundaries, the town would like the opportunity to discuss it. And the first time that we've met would be tonight, following getting notice of the other two new RIP. We do have this water study that shows a projection 50 years, there may not be sufficient water. We do have room for it to develop. It's a huge resort at one end that isn't completely up and running yet. We would like an opportunity to be able to discuss this in the meeting tonight without the commissioners approving letters that show their support. Thank you for letting me make the comment.
Thank you very much, Anna. Matt, when they, when they discuss this, can you compile all the information, the outcome of the meeting? So as soon as we get back to the meeting, have this to be one of the first item on the agenda for, for an action?
Okay, yeah, we can certainly get the minutes and everything from, from the meeting. Which three, which three items were there? Because there's all three of them, I guess, is what you're looking at, Anna.
Yes. All those in, yes.
This is Commissioner Adams. I'd like to ask a... This is Commissioner Adams, I'd like to ask a real quick question of Anne.
Okay.
So is this request to table this coming from the town of Bluff or from the Bluff Waterworks? Who, who actually overspews the water in Bluff? Is it the, uh, Incorporated City of Bluff or is it the Waterworks?
Bluff Waterworks, um, does the management and distribution and the town of Bluff holds the water rights. And the town of Bluff is the one that, uh, that had the grant from the CDBG to do the year's study. And the request to table it is actually coming from me since we have not had a meeting. Um, I did reach out to Bluff Waterworks, um, as soon as I was able to put all the information together, Commissioner, to ask if we had any input. I've not received anything back from our Powell at this point. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now going back into voting, all those in favor and tabling the items? Aye. Aye. Oppose?
I'll vote no because I think we're in a crisis with livestock in the county and, and I think the livestock producers need the water immediately. And I, I would hate to hold up any livestock, uh, person from getting water for their livestock.
I agree with you, uh, Commissioner Adams, I feel the same way. But, uh, we're at crunch time to where we're, with the pandemic and everything else. And I think it's very important that, uh, we consult with the, with the, with the people and the individual to make those decisions. So with that, um, the, uh, the item is tabled. Now the next item on the agenda, uh, Mr. McDonald?
So yeah, the support letter for Range Improvement Project 780-A. This is the East League Horn Pasture Waterwell System Number 11. I don't know if you want Nick to give you a presentation or if you're going to follow Anne's advice to table all three of these.
Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Adams makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? For the discussion at least? Once again for a second? And it's gone. So, uh, Commissioner Adams, did you, uh, motion for, for C or did you add it three? Since the other one has been tabled, this, these particular items are kind of similar to that.
Yeah, I think I've stated my position on all three items. I, I, I certainly don't want to create any liability for the county. If, uh, this livestock grazer starts to lose his animals, uh, or has any damage because of lack of water.
Okay, so do I have a second? Once? Twice?
Okay.
Gone. Did Commissioner Gray Eyes say second?
I was in, uh, well, I was second with a question. Where is this, um...
We're, we're already voting. But go ahead.
Um, to say, we're in this old pasture water system.
Tell them where it's at and where the location is, Matt.
Right, so the, uh, the Bluff Bench, uh, area, we're on number two, what was that called? East League Horn Pasture Waterwell. This would be a livestock water well to drill a new one, install a solar pump and 1,500 feet of buried pipeline and have two livestock water troughs. And this is in the Bluff, on the Bluff Bench area, approximately four miles east of Bluff.
Uh, is that on, on where Billy Gaines' gravel pit is? Right alongside the highway?
I'm not sure where that gravel pit is. This is in section 23 and that probably doesn't help you. This would be just on the, uh, maybe three quarters of a mile to the west of the recapture rim there. This is, this would be along the, the main highway to Monazima Creek. Primarily the north of the highway and there's also a little segment just to the south of that highway.
If you're following along in your packet, it's page 39. Shows the amount of that area.
Are you still on the line, Anna?
I am.
Um, my question is, is this water that's, uh, located right next to the highway where the turnoff into Billy's gravel pit is?
It's north of there.
Hear the rocks?
It's up on the bench.
Where the old grape field used to be?
You got me on that one, I don't know.
If you're speaking of the, uh, orchards there, Commissioner, this would be probably two or three miles east of that.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's roughly, uh, it's, it's probably three quarters of a mile west of the rim of Recapture, where the highway crosses Recapture.
It's right, right above, uh, the church establishment?
Well, I think, uh, St. Christopher's is downstream from, from the mouth of Recapture. I don't have a full map, but I'm thinking it's downstream. So this would be somewhat to the northeast of St. Christopher's Mission.
Jay, do you know where Recapture is? Recapture Refinery alongside that wash?
Yeah.
It's near there.
I don't know where it is.
Okay, all right, good. How do you got all that?
Well, if, if, and Bluff doesn't have any, uh, objection to it.
Um, so, I'm not sure what your question to Bluff is. What we're asking is that on all three of these items, that they just be deferred to allow the town council to meet and discuss what our position, our official position is on these three. All, uh, three parcels or all three, uh, range improvement plans of those, two of them have wells proposed for drilling into the aquifer, which covers our entire area, Bluff, not just Bluff proper, but community at large, including the Navajo Nation.
Well, if we, uh, if, if, if this is tabled, will, will you give us enough time to, um, and start pursuing with this? Because I, I, I feel for the ranchers as well and I know where, uh, Bruce is coming from and I, I sure hate for them animals to be out there. And especially right now, the, uh, the heat seems to be much greater than it, it's been before, so hot and it's pretty dry out there. And let's see if we can hustle up and, and get these meetings in line so that way we can maybe consider what we need to do. So Commissioner, with that, um, there, it seems like all the three items are kind of, um, in, in, in the same as what we're discussing. So if any of you would like to make a motion to table all three for two more weeks, which is our next meeting, by then we should have some answers. So, uh, let, let's do this. And, uh, do I have a motion to table all three items?
Commissioner Maryboy, this is Sandberg. Could I interject a comment before you entertain a motion?
Yes, sir.
I would say that the third one is a wildlife, two wildlife guzzlers. And this consists of a 10-foot by 12-foot collection apron, probably corrugated roofing material, two each of those in two different locations along the east side of South Cottonwood Wash. There's a 500 gallon storage tank with each one. So there, as, um, Mayor Lepren stated, these are not wells, these are attachment facilities to catch, uh, rainfall and snowfall on this 10-foot by 12-foot metal apron, which would run into a 500 gallon storage tank and be dispersed in a drinker for wildlife, a very small drinker. Species targeted there, the benefit of primarily scaled quail with mule deer and other wildlife as secondary beneficiary.
Thank you, uh, Nick, that does make sense. Um, reconsidering the, uh, the three items, if we could table the, uh, the B and C and approve the, uh, uh, the last item? Um, I need a, a motion from commissioners?
Motion to table C only.
You want to approve, uh, B and D?
Well, we already took care of B.
Yeah, we already taken care of B.
Okay.
C is the one we're talking about, which I motion to table.
All right, do I have a second to table item C? Going once?
No, I'm not going to make that motion because I'm worried about the livestock.
I, I, I do too, Bruce.
I do too.
Believe me, I do too, but...
We're hauling water more than 25 miles at Navajo Mountain area or livestock. What's compared to maybe even less than that? You're talking about livestock water. Uh, two weeks is almost here.
Just two weeks. Okay, all those in favor, uh, the, uh, second to the tabling motion on item C? Going once? Going twice? For the record, on three, Chair takes the position to second the, uh, the item. The call for two, three fails. Now all those in favor, I'm tabling the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Item D?
Opposed, huh?
How many oppose?
I oppose.
Okay, and no abstention. Thank you very much. Um, item D, supporting the Little Range Improvement Project? And that's the one that, uh, Nick just barely, uh, told us where the, the trapping COVIDs are going to be at. So do I have a motion to discuss this item? Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Adams, okay. Um, any questions or comment, commissioners? If there be none, all those in favor in supporting item, uh, D?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, business action.
Okay. So you've got consideration of an agreement with San Juan County Public Health Department and the State of Utah Department, uh, State of Utah Health Department for Payroll Protection Program Healthcare Enhancement Act for year 2020. Time to turn over to Kirk. I'm clearly presenting this agreement.
Thanks. Yeah, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Great, um, we may actually want to, I don't know if we want to take action on this or not, the state actually took this contract back. They identified two issues that they were going to address. I was hoping I'd have finalized language today, but they noticed that the date was wrong. It's currently June 1st through November 20 of 2022 and it should have been July 1st. Um, and they also noticed that under section 4B dot 1, that it required us to recruit and hire additional personnel, and that was not the intent. The intent was to support existing personnel or hire additional. Uh, so they've taken that back to modify it. I don't know if you want to take any action on this today and, um, so that it might be smoother in the future if you want to wait for those amendments to come before we take action. But in a nutshell, this is the Payroll Protection Act, Healthcare Enhancement Act. Um, this is, uh, just to help fund, uh, employees who would have been charging the contracts that might have been impacted by COVID-19. And it helps supplement our COVID-19 response to, um, pay for existing staff and hire additional staff as needed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is, uh, your recommendation is to wait on this?
I, I think that we should probably wait on this and, and, and bring it back in the future. I was hoping we'd have language, but I think we should probably wait.
And your recommendation, a motion to table this is next meeting?
Motion been made to table the item, uh, no discretion. Um, all those in favor in, in deleting this item off the agenda?
I'll step into motion and vote in favor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams, and, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The next item on the agenda.
We've got consideration approval of Emergency Management Planning Grant. This will be presented by Tammy.
Hey, Tammy.
You're on mute. You're still on mute. So she's, she may be running down the hall.
Better to hit star six.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? There we go. Good morning, how are you this morning?
Good.
Good. So I, I have for consideration the EMPG grant. It's the Emergency, um, Planning Grant. This is what, um, pays my wages and the wages of the emergency management staff and it allows us to fund the program within the county. And it is a match with the state, it's a 50/50 match. So we pay 50% and the state pays 50%. And the, our 50% is, uh, $51,000 and then the state funds the other half.
Okay, motion would be in order?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes, and do I have a second?
We've lost Commissioner Adams to a phone call. And so it's just with you two right now. We still have a quorum, but it's just you two.
I will censor one, two, three, there's nobody else, and I will second the motion. For discussion, if there be none, all those in favor in approving item B for, um, Emergency Management?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item, C, Tammy?
I have um before you, and it is in your packet, a declaration declaring a drought emergency within the county. We are pretty high up on the drought index, and if we declare an emergency of drought, this allows um farmers and ranchers to seek some funding with help with their crops and livestock through the USBA.
So a motion to approve?
By Commissioner Gray Eyes?
Yes, sir.
You're back? So Commissioner Adams is back, second by Commissioner Adams. Uh any question, comment? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mac, the next item is yours.
Okay, commissioners, this one is um we've got consideration of an ordinance establishing the administrative hearing program within San Juan County. Couple commission meetings ago, you approved the contract with our administrative logic. This kind of gives him a policy and guidance that um helps to work for and also formally the process to initiate um added a hearing with him. And so these, for right now, what we have in anticipation, the items that can be heard is anything um that's disputed on a building code, uh planning and zoning, animal control. I put in animal control. We really don't have a policy um countywide that I can find regarding animal control. Uh but knowing that we are uh providing those policing services for Monticello City, animal control may be something of that. Um any licensing that the county has, um the health and safety, what I anticipate on this is if we, if you um notices a violation or fines with our weed board or our weed um supervisor, that those um fines can be disputed often, sometimes, not oftentimes, but sometimes when you terminate or you go through a termination of a county employee, they they want to have an appeal process for that, so we offer that opportunity through this policy. As well as if there were any violations through our landfill sanitation and things like that. And so overall, this creates the process in which the administrative systems can be heard, especially if there's financial implications for our ordinance, that instead of just going directly to a district court to dispute them, this gives them an internal process. This is something that's required by state code that we formulate the process, and so the policy does exactly that to where it gives people an opportunity to go through this process. We can think of several instances where we're in lawsuits right now, had we had this process in place, um we could have potentially avoided um a district court. And so that's what that's about.
Motion to approve?
Motion for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams, any questions, comment? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you very much. The next item?
Okay, this next item is consideration of a contract for San Juan County waged tax claim agreement with Lisbon Valley Mining Company LLC. We do have the the um, wouldn't say applicant, but the the contractee from Lisbon Valley online as well, and we can turn time over to him to speak to it as well. But um what this contract does, it um, so currently Lisbon Valley Mining Company, from two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and nineteen, their total amount of outstanding tax liability is one million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents at total to date. And this agreement allows them to begin operation and make payments. So what they're anticipating with a new industry that they've been working with, they're anticipating beginning operation, meaning operations in the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty, the next quarter. And and this will allow them to reach to clear the company's balance sheet on their day. They anticipate um hiring fifty employees immediately with this new investment, with the potential, the total employee base of ninety-five by December twenty twenty-one. So what they're asking is if San Juan County waives and releases a portion of that outstanding tax liability, that's mainly the penalties is accrued interest, the total amount of three hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-two cents, which will be waived. We will set up payment agreement. Their payments will be sixty monthly payments of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-one cents, which will be paid each month for the sixty months, uh for a total of one million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Then each payment will be made on the last day of the month. They'll also be getting payment of their twenty twenty property tax by June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one, and she'll make all other future annual property tax payments on the thirty-first of March that following year. One of the things that we also added to this agreement is a default mechanism in here that if they're in default, then um an estate's in here, if not otherwise excused by the by the San Juan County Commission, this will result in a restatement of all of the waived liability. And so it brings into play everything but from the beginning if they if they default on it, unless you commissioners waive through an amendment to the agreement with some other agreement thereof. And so that commissioners kind of a summary of this agreement.
Thank you very much. Um Hardy from Lisbon Valley, you there?
Hey, George, are you still online? If you are, I have you muted.
Tell them how to unmute.
Hey, George, press press star star six on here on your phone if you're on. I'm not seeing his name here, so he may have fallen off. But George has just worked with us on this agreement for us, you know, as when you look at the county economic development wise, especially during this COVID, there there are a lot of county residents who have lost their jobs, including those that used to work at the mine. The fact that they're going to be in operations and are working with other companies instead of declaring bankruptcy, um they're willing, they've been willing all this time to uh work with investors to try to start operations back up again. The fact that they can hire fifty employees beginning in this next quarter um is promising. And so it's, if they're able to um go through and reorganize their balance sheet, um create this as a a longer-term debt, but sixty months, and then continue forward with operating, knowing that we're accepting payments for that, then it'll it'll help the company. I think, George, we're getting messages that George is on. Can you hear us, George? If you're there, go ahead and take it away. You can't unmute, please. Star six to unmute. Or at the bottom of the application. You can hear, you can't unmute. So if you hear this, but we can't unmute? I don't see him at all on there, probably. Had you, you were unmuted for a second. So try to unmute that again, George, what you did there.
Were you able to hear?
There you go, you're online.
Okay, sorry about that, I've been trying like crazy. I this is a new web service for me. I'm sorry, go ahead, I I got distracted trying to get on the phone here.
It's on you, so go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna say, we're moving ahead with a transaction. As Mac described, let me try and take this off speaker. And this proposal that we've put forward to the commission would, as Mac stated, help us attract the capital to the situation that we've been working on all summer. We had a difficult experience with economic fallout from uh COVID nineteen, um but we've been operating the facility uh this summer and have found a a very interested capital provider um that we've been going through detailed due diligence with over the course of the last eight to twelve weeks at this point, so we're well down the road. And are are in public comment uh on the permitting front to reobtain in our operating permits that were temporarily suspended or were were suspended um in March, with a goal of restarting operations in Q four of this year, as Mac described. And as I mentioned, this proposal that we've put forward is a key to securing the financing. And you know, I I think the final thing I'd point out is we've really struggled with copper price over the past several years, and most recently due to the trade dispute, but what I can say is the copper price has has rebounded very strongly. Finally, after all this time, so that's a a positive tailwind for the situation and and hopefully getting to uh a completed transaction here over the coming thirty to sixty days, which is our goal.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, a motion would be in order?
Make a motion that we approve the agreement with Lisbon Valley Copper Mine as presented.
Thank you. Uh motion by Commissioner Adams, and do I have a second?
Uh second for discussion.
Second for discussion, okay. Uh go right ahead, uh Mr. Gray Eye, Commissioner Gray Eyes.
Um, Mr. Ben, for private person, um is this benefiting the San Juan County overall? The arrangement that's been made?
It it does, Commissioner, I think you you look at it two different ways, um well, three different ways. For my my first one that I looked at, and what I mentioned is the fact that they're going to be rehiring fifty people in our area, that's fifteen people, fifty people that pay taxes, and it'll help those families out with the potential to move into ninety-five people. And then you look at the fact that if this, if the company overall were to go bankrupt, we would, our tax revenue that we receive from them would still be, and so we wouldn't be receiving anything from them. It would go through um bankrupt court and determine what amounts went to which people that were owed. The the other one is the fact that they're willing to come back to the table with us and make payments on the debt that's already occurred, so they haven't paid since two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and nineteen. They're willing to step up, honor that obligation, minus um fees and interest that's accrued on there and penalties, and pay us what they've owed. That's all, that's all we're really out. So in total, we're out three hundred and eleven thousand accrued from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen, but in lieu of that, we began making the payments to catch up with the one point four million, just over one point four million um in tax that they owe. And so overall, the county is in a better position, not only receiving the tax, but also employee base, which I think is also added rate, and maybe more important than that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comment, questions? If there be none, all those in favor in the support?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstention, opposition, there be none, thank you very much, and um um the next item there, but Mac?
Okay, the next item, you have the approval of the SITLA PC Zone Application and Preliminary Community Structure Plan as recommended by the planning commission on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty. This will be presented by Walter Byrd. I know that there's been several people waiting for comment on items, and you you had mentioned to her question that you would allow for comments on items on the agenda. So I don't know if you want to open that up to public comment for this item first? Go through those comments and then um discuss, work on after that? How do you want to handle this?
Well, the public comment is over, it was way up in there, and now we're discussing an item, an action item. So if anybody, if there's no comment from the commissioners, then we go out and it's 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 been done uh many times all over, and this is the first time we're going to allow that. But uh at least maybe four, three or four or five, whatever you think would be feasible enough to speak to the issue. So uh do I have a motion to um or comment?
Motion, no time.
Motion and second by Commissioner Gray Eyes, thank you very much. Okay, uh um Mac, called upon who you feel is is speaking to the issue?
Okay, so we have, there's only nineteen people that are on the line still. Whoever, so I've got Carolyn Daly, she just unmuted herself. Carolyn, would you like to speak? And just again, this will be three minutes, uh that will time you for to provide your comments, and then we'll go from there.
Oh, okay, um thank you very much. I'm actually gonna try to stick to my time today. Good good morning, commissioners and Mr. McDonald. I already submitted comments to the three commissioners on Saturday for their review, and I forwarded these to Mr. McDonald this morning, uh if he could please place them as part of the public record, and I won't repeat all my comments now, but I wanted to add some specific um details to that. According to the county attorney, approving SITLA's application will make them vested, I'm quoting, vested to proceed with the development process, including the number of dwellings and square footage of non-residential uses reflected in the PC zone. Now, this will apply to the entire five thousand acres that was planned to be developed over the next fifty years, and I feel this encovers the county in an unprecedented development of a huge area over a long time period, and it's not prudent governance and gives no benefit to the county. It only benefits SITLA and limits the county's ability to negotiate in the future. And while the county attorney shows they have met the six application requirements, his opinion is incomplete because he completely ignores item three of the purpose section of the PC ordinance, which is on page thirteen, where it states, "The purpose of the ordinance is to facilitate development within San the San Juan County portion of the Spanish Valley in accordance with the Spanish Valley Area Plan that was adopted as part of the general plan," and that's a quote. that was adopted as part of the general plan, and that's a quote. So if you look at the Spanish Valley Area Plan on page 36, there is a table that clearly specifies the phases for development. Phase 1 applies to an area with existing housing. Phases 2 and 3 apply to undeveloped land belonging to SITLA and specify the development of 950 acres and 525 acres respectively for a total of 1,470 acres over a 10-year period. So I urge the Commissioners to exercise their authority and leadership to follow the Spanish Valley Area Plan's guidance and please reject this current application from SITLA, which totally deviates from the area plan and instead request them to submit a Phase 1 plan for about 1,500 acres over a zero to 10-year period in accordance with the Spanish Valley Area Plan. I think this is best for the county as well as best for Spanish Valley residents. We citizens in Spanish Valley really appreciate your support and leadership in the county for how development will proceed in our area. So thank you for my, being able to comment to you today.
That's fine right there, good job. Okay, we have, so like Commissioner had mentioned on the repeat, so try not to repeat yourselves on there. I'm trying to stop the timer, hold on. All right, so we did have another request. Monet Clark, I got on your chat, are you?
How do we, how do we let you know that we want to speak?
Through either chat or unmuting yourselves is fine.
Okay.
Monet had, she had.
Yes.
We'll take her and then, is it Ann, are you Desert Dog?
No, I just, Sheila Canavan, but I don't care about the order.
Okay, so we'll get, you know, first and then you next.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me?
I can.
Can you hear me?
Just put your name and everything together.
Okay, this is Monet Clark and I live in Spanish Valley. I just want to thank the Commissioners for their service, for your services in San Juan County. You know, it takes many, many hours. Today, I asked that you deny the SITLA's PC Zone Application and Preliminary Community Structure Plan. But I think we definitely need SITLA's to have a PC Zone plan approved. So instead of having the whole 5,245 acres, I'd like SITLA to reduce their zone application to about 3,000 acres. I studied all the maps that are in the Community Structure Plan SITLA has, the preliminary, and I'm most concerned about the land south of Ken's Lake on the east side of Spanish Valley Drive. This area is very flat and buildable and SITLA's Preliminary Community Structure Plan Figure 10 shows this land is slated as part of SITLA's central development area. This is tying up too much land into a PC zone and especially these lands. Please ask SITLA to remove parcels 7, 8, 9, 16, 17, and 18, which is shown on the Figure 5 called Parcel Map. These parcels just allow a lot of things in the PC zone and they should be preserved as open space for now. I think that these are just important parcels that, which connect to BLM land and they're just south of Ken's Lake. And I feel that it would, they're at risk of being developed with many, many options. And so I would ask that you ask them to concentrate on the north area where the sewer and water is already connected. And just remember that once the zone designation is granted, this forever gives SITLA the right to propose all of the very hugely variable uses in a PC zone. So that's why, I feel it's a bit precarious to use, to take the whole 5,000 acres. In the future, this hasn't been pointed out before, but the county may want to actually change the zoning that's currently designated as PC district. So I want the county to keep its flexibility. And remember that SITLA is not a person, it's an organization that manages land set aside to fund Utah's schools. And Utah is all of us, the citizens. And that is why we all have a stake in this, in how the land is used. I do know there's a restriction that these funds apply only to schools, that's fine. But I'm happy that there's a plan, I'm happy that there's a master plan and I just think maybe we should just look at a smaller area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, we had, let's see who was next that wanted to speak, Desert Dog 70.
Okay, that's me, I think, Sheila Canavan. Wanted to say, first of all, thank you to the Commission for asking the county attorney to provide an opinion on this issue. And I want to thank Mr. Laws for providing it. I have read it now and I want to point to what it says on page 5, which is, quote, "As long as this PC Zone Application, Ren Application for Rezone complies with the six requirements set forth on page 20 of the ordinance, the county cannot deny the rezone application." I want the Commission to understand, but I'm a lawyer, a Utah licensed lawyer, even though land use is not my specialty. But I want the Commission to understand just how drastic a legal conclusion this is. And you should also note that the county attorney has provided no legal support for that conclusion. I read what he cited, he pointed to page 20 of the ordinance. I read that, which says, among other things, "Following recommendation by the Planning Commission, a PC Zone Plan shall be submitted for review and approval by the County Commission," period, end quote. Now, obviously, some review is considered. So then I wondered, well, what is the law about, that applies to a review by the county? And the law is, and there are many legal decisions articulating the standard, that the Commission must not deny a rezone application arbitrarily or capriciously. So that's the standard. Mr. Laws doesn't discuss it at all. He doesn't cite any cases to the Commission. He doesn't provide any guidance as to what might be considered arbitrary or capricious. So you cannot rely on this legal opinion if that's what it is. You need to send the county attorney back to the drawing board if you're even considering approving this rezone and ask him to provide you with the law that would support such an opinion or to provide you with guidance as to what arbitrary and capricious might mean in light of such things as Ms. Daly pointed out in the zoning ordinance. Thank you. And I submitted these comments in writing in the last 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, who do we have next? Thank you, Larry, you're unmuted, did you want to speak to this issue, Larry?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Much of my comment is similar Carolyn Daly, so I won't go too far into that from Upper Spanish Valley. But I did want to speak in opposition to the blanket application for the 5,000 acres. I think there's a lot of trouble, problems with going to such a large approval. The county shouldn't relinquish its control over such a large parcel. We also have an issue of water. We've got 500 acre feet, I think, that have been moved from San Juan River up to the Pat Creek Drainage. But that covers perhaps a tenth of the 5,000 acres in development. It's a period of 50 years that this is intended to be developed. So the council would be giving up its opportunity to have a say in some respects over what happens on that land over the next half century. We don't know where we'll be there then in water especially. We're oversubscribed to the Pat Creek Drainage right now as it is. So those are my comments, I hope they're acceptable to you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, let's see. Anyone else wishing to make a comment?
This is Marnie Lutterby. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for listening to my great colleagues. I have nothing else to add except thank you and think about this seriously. A lot of us will be dead by the time SITLA gets through using this property. And I don't want to leave this for my children and grandchildren. I'd like to leave them some open land that they can go out to Ken's Lake and enjoy what we've enjoyed for years. So thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, is that it, Mac?
Let's see, anyone else?
I think Pat Berry's trying to comment, to get on and comment. He had trouble earlier, he wanted to comment at 11 and couldn't.
So, Pat? You could go ahead and unmute yourself if you're wishing to make a comment. Star 6, if that helps any, or on the app, if you go down to the bottom, there is an unmute button. I cannot.
Can you hear me now? Am I coming through?
Yes, you can.
Just say your name.
Thank you. All right, real quick, just wanted to comment that in my opinion, the Planning and Zoning Commission has bent over backwards to oblige SITLA in any way, shape, and form that they can possibly do. They did that with love by helping them to beat the moratorium. They've done it in not requiring the environmental impact studies or anything else. And now they want to give them a blank check and have SITLA say, you know what? Don't worry about the amounts or what we're gonna do, we'll let you know after we've done it. So I'm just asking the Commissioners to put the brakes on this. Don't allow them to cart block and make them go through in the phases, planning it bit by bit so that everything be pieced together as we go along rather than to make one giant leap for mankind or should I say for SITLA kind at the moment. And that's all I really have to say. It's just common sense not to approve it.
Thank you. Is that it, Mac?
Anybody else wishing to make a comment on here?
I guess that's it.
That is it. We just needed a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Well, I would recognize that and also, do I have a second?
Second.
Second to close the public comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Walter, are you?
I'm still here, yes.
Okay, did you want to make your presentation on here?
Well, it's pretty straightforward. This, this application was approved back in June by the Planning Commission. It was taken to the County Commission in June. It was requested that time a legal opinion be given, it's been given. I think the legal opinion is, supports approval of the application. In the meantime, SITLA provided supplemental maps and pages to their application to bolster their previous application. They went to the Planning Commission in July, they went through the application. There's six requirements for approval of that application. They went through all six of those, those requirements, basically, and determined that all those were met. And these are requirements that were let, that were placed in the ordinance that was passed back in November. And so, once the Planning Commission concluded that the six criteria were met, they voted unanimously to approve the application and thus we're here with the Planning Commission recommending to the County Commission that it approve. It was PC rezone application. That's all I have.
Thank you for that. Commissioners, there, I did talk to our attorney, Kendall Laws. And if you'd like, he can go and just kind of give a summary of his review. You had, this is something that you had, so originally we had tabled this item for this review and I thought that may be good to hear from him as well on this.
Is he there?
Yeah, can you hear? Yeah, I can hear you. Commissioner Merryboy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
So a couple of, a couple of things with regards to the legal review that you had, had me do on this issue. First is, when we were initially reviewing it, we actually found that, that there, that our initial recommendation was that they hadn't, that SITLA had not actually fully complied with the requirements under Section A, the PC Zone Plan, which is what you're here to consider. We, we let them know that, like we would any other applicant, that there were some, some missing, some missing information from what they had given us, which is why they then asked to go back and supplement the record with the Planning Commission. So that's another thing that has, another step that has taken place in the, in this interim period. Just to, to discuss a little bit about the opinion and, and how we get, how we got here. The, the ordinance that was passed by the Commission that's what we're stuck with. A lot of the comments and a lot of the concerns that have been made by the public about the size of the development and things like that, I, I don't disagree with them, Commissioners, however, we passed, the Commission passed the ordinance and the version of the ordinance that they passed was a draft and that draft had some problems. And that's what we're stuck with. A, is this application was made under that ordinance and so that's the, that's the lens or that's the way that we have to look at this application. We don't, we don't have an option to, to now delay, delay, delay and then ask for, and then, and then try to amend the ordinance. That, that's not something that we have the ability to do. They, they've made the request under the ordinance that the County Commission passed late last year. And so that's where we're at. And that ordinance unfortunately allows them to make a request for a PC zone, rezone, which is what this is, for 5,000 acres. And in, in reality, they're not asking for a rezone of the entire 5,000 acres that they own there in Spanish Valley because a big chunk of that is already zoned as, as PC zone. So they're, they're not asking for a rezone on the stuff that is already, already PC zone. They're just asking for the rest of their property to be included into the PC zone. So that's where we're at. There were some comments that I just want to make it clear with the Commission. There was a discussion about the, the opinion being, being incomplete because it failed to, to address the purposes of the PC Zone Plan. The purposes for the record, and if the Commissioners are following along, the purposes are found on page 13 and 14 of that document. Those purposes are essentially the, the legislative intent of this ordinance. Those are the goals that, that the Commission established when they passed this ordinance. The goals for, for the development of Spanish Valley. However, that, they are not requirements at any given phase. They are the, the goal and the, the ideals that, that we would like to encourage and, and we'd like to have in Spanish Valley. The requirements that the commission is actually looking at for today's purposes, again, just following ordinance as passed, is on 20 of the, of the, of the PC zone plan, the, the document that, that we have here. That was again passed late last year by the commissioners. And it is, you'll see on page 19 that there's a table that explains the, the various steps that are required in the PC zone process. We're on the first one. We're on the PC zone plan or rezone. And so the, the requirements for that are laid out in, in subsection A. They're on page 20. And there are six requirements that, that need to be met in order for the commission to approve the, the PC zone rezone, which is again where we're at today. And it, it's my opinion, as stated in the document provided to the commissioners, that, that all six of those requirements are met. Is it ideal for San Juan County or is there merit to some of the concerns of the public? There absolutely are merits to those concerns. But we're stuck playing by the rules that we selected for ourselves back in November. And that's where we're at. And so my recommendation is that because those six steps, those six requirements for the PC zone plan are met, that the commission should approve the plan. If, if the commission looks, there are other steps along the way. There's community structure plan, development agreements, project plan and subdivision plan. There are other opportunities for the commission to, to have today and for the county to weigh in on, on what this community will look like. I, I think it's also important to note that, as stated previously, forty of the Sitla land in Spanish Valley is already PC zoned. This is just, they're, they're just asking for the rest of their property to be brought into that. And quite frankly, under the, the PC zone, the way that, the way that I read the different options under the ordinance as passed in November, the PC zone actually gives the county more, more opportunity to influence what happens in Spanish Valley than if some of those parcels currently owned by Sitla remain commercial or, or flex. Those, those zones are, are, would be a lot easier, quite frankly, for Sitla to just do as they please. The PC zone allows the county to have five additional opportunities to, to have some say to, to achieve those, those goals as set out in the purposes of the ordinance. So unless the commission has any questions for me, that would be, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, we do.
Mac, is it possible I could just make a clarification of what he said?
We're, we're past, they've closed public comment.
Well, you don't let us comment after the staff has commented. He, he says that they're already zoned.
Sorry about that commissioners. There's no way to, to block people on here. And so the, we do have Elise on here if you want to hear from the applicant from Sitla who has made the application. Elise, are you still here? I don't know if you wanted to touch on things or I can go into a little bit more explanation on the zone and kind of the process, which I think is, is kind of important to understand as well.
Yes, I'm here if you can hear me.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Perfect. Good afternoon commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to make a brief comment to you. I appreciate the comments that the county attorney made. That was enlightening to hear those comments. And the, I, there are two comments that I want to make in reference to some of what I've heard from the public comment a bit earlier. One is if, if you look at the table that's in the application that shows the land uses and the acres associated with those, 40% of the project is open space. So hopefully it helps people get a better picture of this is not wall-to-wall houses, if you will, or whatever it's going to be. It is largely open space with a clustering component to it. The other comment that I would like to offer, and it does echo a little bit what the county attorney said, is that the ordinances for the PC zone lay out a number of opportunities for both the county commission, obviously county staff, but also the public to weigh in at different times as, as one goes through the various steps. So this is not a one-shot-done procedure here. So I'd offer you that comment as well. I thank you for your time and your consideration of this application and turn things back to Mac. Thank you.
Thank you Elise for that explanation on. As I look over the process and I've met with kind of this man or any resident of San Juan County, kind of in an open public meeting to review their application, to receive comments and kind of discuss those concerns and, and comments in general. And in there, you've heard today kind of a majority of the sentiment that I had also heard during that. So I won't, I won't belabor those any more than what you've already received in their comments. But I think overall, it's one thing to note for me, I really do like this PC plan, even with all of its issues in the ordinance itself. What you're doing is you're bringing, and Sitla's asking for this. They're asking to bring all of their properties under this PC zone process. And so through this plan, and kind of like Kendall mentioned, this is the first step. And the first step is the application process defining those maximum uses that they're going to, to work towards. And they've met all six of those requirements that the ordinance is asking for in an application. And so they've met that and our attorney's reviewed that. He's agreed with that. They've, so they've provided what the ordinance has asked. The, one of the questions that members on that meeting had asked were, well, what is, what does the phasing look like? And you hear today some of that, that public comment, well, what does it look like? Are they going to phase it or are they not? In their application, you can, you can see hints of phasing as like Carolyn had mentioned in the, the general plan, which the general plan is a, a guidance tool, not an ordinance. And, but Sitla is, is willing to do that. They're phasing this throughout. Now, which, which properties are phased first? That's, that's up to them. It's also, that kind of will be dictated in the future by the economy in general. But beginning at the north is kind of what they're looking at. The north portion of their properties going south. And so for me, there, there is that willingness to, to enter into a phasing approach. The reason that you don't see it at this, this stage in the process is because our ordinance is the way it is. It didn't ask for phasing. It didn't ask for a phasing approach. It didn't ask for a phasing plan. And so therefore Sitla didn't provide a phasing plan. And so in the next steps, when we look at, after this first step, when you get into the community structure plan, and if you go through their application today, they've, they've given you a portion of that community structure plan, even though that's not what we're looking at today. In that community structure plan, we begin to work on this. We begin to work on the strategy of development. We began to work on the infrastructure. And so you hear a lot of comments regarding the fact of, of water. You know, there's not any water. Well, how much water? There was mentioning in here today that the 500 acre feet of water that the special service district has. Well, how much water does Sitla bring to the table as well? None of that has been explored, but it's not supposed to be explored at this, at this stage in the game. This is just the PC zone plan application process. And so as they go through and they propose the, the square footage of commercial, how do you go through and analyze how much water you're actually going to need? If you can't tell you what the commercial use actually is. So if you put it, say for example, really, they have a developer that wants to come in and put in a, a horse arena as a commercial use and, and lift out stalls and go into the cutting hole business, then how much water does that take? Well, in the next steps, that's what is, is further defined. That's where the analysis takes place. And so I appreciate the fact that people are concerned with water. I'm not saying that we aren't either. There are current studies that are taking place from the division of drinking water, monitoring wells and aquifers and how much flow, how much recharge in those aquifers that have taken place. And so during that process of their phasing and naming what those communal uses are, that's when we get into the narrowing down of how much water is available. What is the capacity to meet the needs of that development and the future development? I also want to point out that in the next phase of this, the community structure plan thing, we have opportunities to hear from the public and hear from the commissioners in that process before we enter into the development agreement. And that development agreement for me is critical because this is where the county commission can impose and it's, it specifically states this in the ordinance in, on page 21. It's the county commission will impose reasonable conditions of approval to mitigate regularly anticipated detrimental impacts in accordance with San Juan County zoning ordinance. That's in the next phase that we get through. And so to me, it's bring them all within the PC zone process. Work through this process. We'll work through, work with the developer, work with Sitla to try to define what their phasing plan is. Go through and, and work on their infrastructure. Work on all of the needs, all of the criteria that that community structure plan process affords and get to the next step. We'll first bring them in with the process. As it stands right now, and, and this is, to me, I'm not advising Sitla, but Sitla's willing to come to the table and be a partner through an open process. By rights, they can just take their property as is right now and keep it within the zones that they are in and not even come back to the table to either the planning commission or the commission, as long as they're developing in accordance with those zones. And so that highway, commercial, residential flex, they never have to bring you back in and explain, you know, for, and this is an example that I use, this isn't something that is there. They may be able to propose a Walmart in a highway flex zone. It would, will consume a lot of work for a bunch of small businesses and a lot of business. And you have, will say that that takes place. And so to me, bringing them all in this process of the PC plan actually gives us that, gives us that ability to enter in to the development agreement with Sitla for those phases that they choose to develop within the next 50 years. I also want to point out that there are businesses with a company that we're working with as far as economic development to try to get more business within to the county. To try to get more manufacturing, more jobs into the county. And this is an area that we're working on. And to try to phase in accordance to the developers that are coming out looking for property and looking for opportunities. It would be difficult for them to upfront, give us a commitment, a 50-year commitment or whatever the years are on how that phased approach works. But by sticking, sticking every, all of the property in this, this PC zone area gives us that ability to work hand-in-hand with Sitla as these developments come forward and come back and ask for that next step in the process and that final, that development agreement that the county has worked with them on. And so if there's ever a concern about water, we address it during the development agreement. If there's ever a concern that they're eating up too much property in a, a certain phase, we, we can help work on that with the development agreement. So for me, that next step is, is really the key. And all of these items can be worked on through the process. It does, and I don't want there to be any under expectation with the fact that, you know, this does vest them to those totals. But if you look at those totals, those totals are already within the zones that they're anticipating there. So they're not asking to go outside of an ordinance, outside of the ordinance that isn't already allowed. They're just following the process commissioners that you guys had approved. This is the only process that we have to go through. And that's the only process that right now that we can, to restrict them to. Any questions commissioners?
Any other comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, Kenneth.
Okay.
With the ordinance that we approved last year in December, and this was at the urging of many residents in Spanish Valley, I wonder if we have, and maybe Kendall or Walter could answer this. Have we addressed the problem with the A1 zoning or the gravel pits as well as spreading the private property of people between commercial and residential? Has that been addressed with the plan that we're being presented with today?
Commissioner Maryboy, if I, if I may?
Go ahead.
So Commissioner Adams, I, my, my office has, has accumulated or, or compiled a, a document that is meant for a discussion with the commissioners on some of these issues. But it, it's because of the nature of it, it would be something that would be more appropriate in, in a closed meeting sort of format rather than an open meeting because of the, because the, the current threats of pending litigation as well as, as well as some other things. So I think that's a discussion that we are aware of those problems and, and we have addressed them or are attempting to help the commission address them. But I don't think that's a conversation that's for this particular meeting at this point.
Another concern that I have is there was some comments that were emailed to me and I assume the other two commissioners about Sitla lying in their application or doing things illegally. Walter or Kendall, have you been able to detect any place in the application process that Sitla was lying or doing things illegal?
So I, Walter can speak for himself. I, I did not find any place where, where that was readily apparent. Certainly I'm, I'm not, I'm not all-knowing as to what the inner workings are of, of Sitla or any other organization. But there was nothing that I saw that was, that made that readily apparent to me or I would have addressed it.
Walter?
And this is Walter. Sitla's never, that I'm aware of, made any misrepresentations to me or the planning commission or the public in any meetings that I've attended.
And another concern that I had from comments that were emailed to me, there were some citizens who stated in their comments, Sitla must simply be stopped. And I'm concerned about the legal liability of the county if the effort is just simply to stop Sitla from doing anything in Spanish Valley. if the effort is just simply to stop SITLA from doing anything in Spanish Valley.
If, if that was the, if that was the purpose for not approving this PC zone, that would certainly be arbitrary and capricious. Um, and it would certainly get the county in a lot of trouble to the tune of a lot of money in damages. If, if, for instance, a court was to determine that, that you're, that the commit, that the county's actions took SITLA's property rights or something like that, uh, the, the number would, would likely be high when dealing with 5,000 acres.
Um, my understanding is that of the 5,000 acres, that nearly 3,000 acres of the 5,000 acres is, is proposed to be open space and, and not developed. And so, um, my question is this. Um, SITLA has a legal obligation by state statute, to try and use the land for the schoolchildren, but the highest and best use that they can to generate funds, uh, to be later used for, um, the purpose of not only schoolchildren, but higher education and for all of the beneficiaries. I can't name all the beneficiaries, but I believe that's part of the state statute. Am I correct in assuming that or not?
I, I guess I'm not sure what, what the question was there, Bruce. If it was for me, I'm, I'm not sure I followed.
The question is, is in state statute, it's my understanding that SITLA is to use the land for the highest and best use to generate funds for all the beneficiaries. Am I false or true in assuming that, that I haven't actually researched it?
I, I believe, I believe you're correct. That is their mandate.
And, um, if, well, um, I just, I just, um, am concerned about the commission doing things that are, that are going to create legal liability so that the county might be litigated for one reason or another. Um, and I thought especially this commission was trying to avoid any further continued litigation moving down the road.
I'm getting pretty scared right now, being at the house under COVID and all that, and now to hear this. Um, you know, we've been on this subject matter for quite some time. I think, uh, we need to, uh, also understand that we are in a position for the people, not an organization. SITLA is an organization and they thrive for the organization SITLA itself. But, um, where and how can we find a middle ground between SITLA and the citizens' concern and us? We're representing these people. And mind you that 5,000 acres, and we've been told over and over that there's not enough water. And to make matters worse, we're, we're the one that's representing these people as the legislative and executive branch. And when and how are these people starting to, uh, walk all over us? We have two attorneys that are supposed to be moving the mountains for us. I'm not opposing the project, but I think we need to find some kind of a neutral ground where we can work with everybody else. These people are going to be living there forever. And once our terms expire, then we don't care who everybody's at. This is the concern that I have. And I think there's enough people that just barely stood up and said, please, I live here and let's do something. Let's make it right. SITLA is an organization that can change their, their plan anytime, any day. What if that happens when we approve this? And then we're going to be looking at our attorneys again and they're going to be telling us, well, you know, if we would have approved this and this would have happened, and it's going to be too late. So to me, it is pressing, but the human lives is where we're at. And I think it's about time that we, uh, we, we get rid of the concept and, and look at the people. Some of these people are old and they don't have enough time to, to be fighting us every day. Some are young, very starting to, to make a living. So was that a little short? And Mac, what kind of a neutral ground could you find as administrator?
So I think that's what I explained to you commissioners, and maybe I haven't explained it really well, but the process allows you to find that middle ground. Um, you, by bringing out those, so they're already, like it was stated, the majority of their property is already in the PC zone. So they're already there for a majority of it. SITLA is just asking to bring in these other pieces into this process. And so the fact that you're bringing all these in and by approving today, what you're doing is you're bringing in all those pieces into the PC process that we can sit down with SITLA and say, here's our concerns and let's work through those concerns. You know, for me, when you, when you try to do the best of both worlds, um, looking at a high, high level picture from an airplane, you can't tell what's ground truth and, and what that looks like on the ground until you get down to the ground. Right now, we have not asked SITLA to propose all of the information to mitigate all of the conforms because in your process, it doesn't ask them to propose that. This next step for us literally puts us at the table with SITLA on more properties to start working through this. As a developer comes and wants to develop commercial, as, you know, as we talk to SITLA about even developing a library, community centers, things like that, it puts us at the table during this process and during that community structure plan to start working on the issues that are there, um, that the residents have. There's nothing in here today that through the approval, um, that you cannot work on during the development agreement. And so it still, it still affords you the opportunity, like I had stated in here, the planning commission may impose reasonable conditions of approval to mitigate reasonably anticipated detrimental impact. You still get that process. What you're approving today is we're bringing in all of those, those little parcels into this PC area so that you begin that next step. If they want phasing and community, then the residents there want phasing, we'll let us work with SITLA during this next step to look at what is phasing for them. Are they just developing the north parcels? Can we also develop some of this local core? You know, that's in, in the middle of all their development, which is kind of their, their community center. You know, is there opportunities for that? Because we have developers that are asking us for opportunities and we want to work with those developers. You know, whether it's manufacturing, whatever the case is, on those properties, and it's going to take a, a different approach. But what this does for me overall, they bring SITLA as a partner and they're willing to be a partner with the county. And, um, the alternative is they can, they can stay as they are and not bring anything back to the county. You know, they just stay within their plans. But to me, I like bringing all the property into the umbrella so that we can continue to work with SITLA through the process. What we approved today is not what, at the end of the day, you're at ground level.
Okay. Now, uh, tell me this. Um, rezoning this whole thing and us vesting the whole entire proposal, the difference between those two, how, how would you characterize that, Mac?
So you're vesting the, the maximum allowable that's already allowable in those land use descriptions. And so if you look at the table in their application, they have neighborhood center, they have central development areas, they have perimeter development areas, flex development areas and highway commercial areas. And so all of those areas, they've given a maximum. Now you heard Elise also mentioned in the last meeting that these are the maximum allowables. This doesn't mean at the end of the day that a developer is going to develop that many square foot. So to say, for example, in the neighborhood center, there is projected to be 670,000 square feet. There's no way that SITLA can point you right now that there's 670,000 square feet. That's what is allowable. And they've just picked the, the maximum allowable to be vested with. Now, as commissioners during this next step, say they propose a water guzzling commercial development for 500,000 square feet. Well, during the development agreement process and through the negotiation process, we're able to work with SITLA and say, hey, SITLA, you've provided, you've provided an example of how you're going to provide water for this 5,000 square foot commercial beast. Um, but where are you getting the water? And in the development agreement, we want to make sure that you have that water set aside for the lifetime of that business, that lifetime of that commercial. You get that opportunity during this next step to go through and work with SITLA during those. And so it doesn't give them the right to go ahead and develop to that maximum. It gives you the opportunity for SITLA to place those maximums and then start working on the development to fine tune it. And we're sitting at the table with them to fine tune that, that development.
Oh, boy.
Uh, to Mr. Commissioner Mary Boy, excuse?
So that's the third interruption on, on this that we've had.
I can't raise my hand.
So, so Mac?
Yeah.
How can, how can the county change anything if SITLA is already vested with a maximum amount?
How can, SITLA will, SITLA will work with us on there. The maximum allowed, allowed on here is something that's already afforded to them. You vest that right up front, but that's, your ordinance allows for that vesting right up front. But we work with them because they're going to have to prove water. You know, that's one of the biggest concerns on here is they're going to have to prove that they have the available water to support that maximum. Also, and Elise had mentioned this, is they may have a housing developer that comes in to want to develop housing, but it may not be to that maximum number that the developer is willing to take on. And so the developers and plus, there's another thing in here is the economy. The economy is going to change what developers propose at the final position is the economy can change things in a moment's notice that we've seen with, with, with Caresa or with COVID. Uh, and so there's going to be changes. There has to be flexibility on here, not only on our part, but also on SITLA's. But SITLA is, they're giving you the maximum that the zones already allow for in those areas according to the ordinance.
Okay, commissioners, I guess we're coming down to a vote. Uh, we've spent, uh, enough time on discussing the issues and I think we pretty much understand where we're at and where things are at and how things function. So, um, at this point in time, I'm going to call for the question. Meaning, um, all those in favor and accepting this, uh, uh, item?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
So one, one goes and one oppose and I will abstain. So Mac, this, the item does not go anywhere. So, uh, bring it back, uh, next meeting. Uh, that's at your leisure because, uh, the vote didn't support it or, or denied it. So it goes, uh, to where in your neighborhood and re-huddle up and try to get in touch with the appropriate, um, SITLA and, and whomever that needs to be there to see what you can compromise.
So on, on here, Commissioner, let me make sure I understand. So what you have before you is an application and you have an ordinance that asks for them to supply the information on that application. SITLA's done that. What, what do you want me to? I don't know what to do with that because they've, SITLA's provided everything that we've asked in the ordinance.
Well, um, it failed to pass and it failed not to pass either. So my position, I abstain because to me, I still feel that there's enough room to satisfy everybody. And, uh, Commissioner Adams wrote it yes. And he is fully aware and understanding that this particular item needs to go because it needs to be dealt with. And Commissioner Gray, I took a position to not support. I don't know what's part of the, uh, the SITLA's, uh, information that he does not agree with, so he opposed it. My idea is to see what we can do. And I still feel that there is a room to work. And whatever the, uh, the problem is with the party, maybe that needs to be looked at. I'm not going to take only one sided, but I think a good discussion should take place. And, um, to me, like I said before, we're here to make a decision for the people, not an organization. Yes, they have done the deed to take 5,000 acres. And there's still no answer to where they're going to get the water. So with that, it falls back on your lap and, um, how we're going to do it? You have two attorneys sitting there. And, uh, maybe they need to look and look out and look at all the legal avenues and what we, what can we do? And compromising is the only, only thing that I can think of on the schedule. So with that, thank you very much. And, uh, we're going to be going down to commissioners' report. Which one of you would like to start?
I have, uh, very little report, sort of. Very good, we, we see a COVID-19, but now I have a report is that we are sliding into curve. So we still are in full practice of the health organization. Um, so that's about the extent of my report.
Okay. Commissioner Adams, do you have any report?
No.
All right. I don't have a whole lot of support. Definitely these are kind of chapters are closed, so this, uh, conference calls. And, uh, several things that are moving right now with the Navajo government development commissions on reforming the government. And that's one of the big topics. And of course, uh, the COVID-19, how it's flatlining the numbers and pretty sad to see that the numbers are climbing again after the kids are going back to school. So, uh, that's what made the extent of my, my report. And, uh, adjournment would be in order, commissioners?
Motion. Motion.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second by Commissioner Adams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Mac. Whatever you need to do with my rubber stamp, do it.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. You guys have a good day.
Have a good day.